All right, 6 o'clock, I call this meeting to order. Stand for pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance is to the God in the United States of America and to the Father, and to the Father who has taken us, one nation, one unity, and within this world will be retained in justice forever.
All right. Barb, please do a roll call.
There's Steve Feldman.
Here.
Councilmembers Jerry Tatum.
Here.
Joe Newbauer.
Here.
Robert Bauer.
Here.
Rich Scordol.
Here.
Moving on to approve of today's agenda, do I have a motion to approve agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, makes that motion, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor makes that second. In discussion. Barring any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda. I understand that Mr. Bauer wants to pull something out of it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull each from the consent agenda.
All right, taking G, uh, H is it?
H.
H, okay. Taking H out, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda minus item H.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, moving on to discussion on that right now, I would take it, right?
Correct.
Discussion on that, all right, so Rob, I'll let you start that. Item H, by the way, for the public's knowledge, is general, construction and general labor's local 363 agreement, resolution 2017 dash 41.
Yes. I just would like to address the public on this. This is a labor agreement between city employees and the city. Employees asked for a 3% for the first year of 2019, 18, 3% for 2019, and 3% for the following year. A three-year contract. I just wanted to pull this from the consent agenda so I could inform the public that this is not a percentage increase that most city residents in San Francisco see. I've been made aware that 3% cost of living increases from an employer is far greater than what other employees get that live in this region. So, I just wanted to make that aware so it didn't just slide in through the consent agenda.
Okay, well, seeing as you did that, and worked at this closed session, it brings the public's attention, how about some discussion on this? I'll start with it. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to say to this?
As far as the 3% with most users that I've been affiliated with, that's pretty standard. So, for me, that's, that was a normal negotiation that I didn't see a huge issue with. I can understand the public's concern with what the residents get, and I don't disagree with Rob's logic behind it. We're already paying huge water bills, and if that adds more money on top of it, I can see where he's coming from. However, like I say, for me, it wasn't a huge shock, and I found it to be reasonable with my experience, but that's what I've been through for.
You ready? No. Rich?
No, I think, I think I just clarified, that I think this was just for the public works employees, correct, Joe?
Correct.
So, this wasn't for all the city employees, we still have some negotiating to do with some other unions, but I agree with Councilmember Newbauer. In my experience, 3% is in a part of the course, so I thought it was pretty fair, but all right, we did have a pretty good discussion about it when we were at our closed session to establish our strategy, so that's my thoughts.
Well, I'll just add to the fact that, you know, you have to, you're gonna have to pay something to retain the good quality people that you have, and that's one, and I didn't see a problem with it, because I realize that what both Joe and Rich have said about that number being more prevalent out there than not, I understand where Rob is coming from, and I appreciate your due diligence for the public's purpose, but you want to retain good people here, and that's, that's one of the, one of the ways to do it, and it's not, I don't think that's overt. I've always said there's a time to spend money, a time to cut money, and right now we're in a growth period, we're gonna have to spend some money, so I have no problem at this particular time. So, do we need to have a motion to accept this now at this particular point?
Mr. Mayor, I got one more comment. I'd like to address the residents. In my experience, in the last 15 years, I've not seen a pay increase for cost of living more than 2.5%.
Is that just at your workplace?
That could be.
Okay. Well, noted and taken. Anything else you want to say?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, at this particular time, I'll entertain a motion to approve item H of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor makes that motion, I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Mr. Scordol makes that second. Barring any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
All right. Motion passes, 41. Thank you. Barb, meeting open to the public.
No one to sign up for the meeting.
You want to sign up? Okay. All right. Moving on to old business, right? People are talking about, so if we move on to old business, we'll be assessing. Okay. You want to start that, Joe?
Sure. I don't know, Mayor, members of the council, we have, as directed, we have a three-year contract proposal from Eric Schoquist. He reduced the length of his contract and put, and formalized everything, and removed related properties, all the things that were up for discussion last time. Anoka County has held firm on their five-year proposal, and part of that is because they do 20% of the properties every year, so over the course of five years, you capture all the properties, so they wanted some consistency with that. That's the main notable change I do have in the staff report. I worked with the mayor, and he just gave direction to prepare an out clause of this particular contract, so if the city, if the city council wishes to do that, what we, if we do end up going with Eric and Mary's proposal, and you do desire to have that particular out clause in the agreement, direct staff to put that in the contract, assuming they agreed to it for next meeting, and we could approve that at the end of the next city council meeting. With that, I think both of the assessors are here in attendance, and I'm sure they'd love to answer any questions you have.
All right. Well, to be fair, Alex wasn't here from the county last time, so, and Eric was, so I'll give you first stand, if you want to get up and say something, Alex?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question before the?
Okay, fine.
I just want to make sure, when I look at the overview, is this, and you see the two proposals side by side, am I looking at those two numbers? One is the grand total for three years, is the other one the grand total for five years, or is that annual cost for this one? How should I look at that table?
Annual for each one.
Annual for each one, okay, thanks. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Councilmembers and councilmen, thanks for having me here again today. This, two proposals, apparently, obviously, the question came that we had, that we lower our contract term down to three years, and all of our current contracts are five-year periods, for staffs who are required to see every property once every five years. We limit that contract length. It opens up the potential for more parcels to be completed with it than last two years of the five-year period, theoretically. So, the reason we hold a part on that is just because all of us are contracts, are against five years contracts as well. It also helps us keep our cost down, we're keeping the standard levels relatively the same. If we're adding some staffing staff, constantly is adding a lot of costs to this area.
Is there, and I'm gonna ask you this, is there an out clause with the county?
Yep, yep, we have, I think it's an H, is it I, if I remember right, I'm not exactly sure. The contract, the out clause basically says that you have, just like the county contract services, you have the ability to override them for years. That way, we can line everything up to make sure everything is set for, for sure we can like that.
Right, because we have, IM 11 is a hold harmless, that's in there, right? Is that right?
Maybe you're wrong.
Is that where you are?
Yeah.
All right.
Fair enough, you're right, we're trying to think better. We're trying to fix this. Yes.
10, 11, 12. I thought it was pretty sure.
Okay. Anything else you want to say, Alex?
Uh, no, this has been a pleasure, I guess, as far as getting, we have a discussion of the app. Hopefully, you guys are gonna do what you can for the rest of your cities.
Now, how long have you been in charge of the department?
I've been responsible since, since July last year.
Okay. So, you've, I mean, I know you've seen some things that you've changed.
Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah, things have changed a lot from last year, and the guys on staff, or out there on commissioners themselves, they'll know that a lot of things have changed since then. A lot more changing forward. Someone said that I've played help in someone's case, as an example of that. I've got a better outline of what I'm doing, for both people's and staff's standpoint, as well as the local system's.
Now, let me ask you, you probably said this before in our meeting, but just to refresh my memory, how many on staff do you have?
Right now, we have three senior officers, and we have 10, well, we have 10 designated real officials without a change next year.
All right, any discussion from the council? Jerry?
I have one question for Alex. So, if we go the other route, but we want to come back to you, is there any such thing, and so if we went the other route in those three years, and we decide we come back to you, is there any such thing as, do we have to give you a certain amount of time to pick the business back up, knowing that maybe 60% of the city would have been assessed, been 40% hadn't in that three-year period?
That would depend on the situation. Obviously, in any of those cases, we've kind of reviewed the situation, see what is the workload. Obviously, if we're out of compliance, we want to make it in compliance as soon as possible, whether that be, you know, front loading, or on a contract, or just making sure that we have the staff resources available, since we have as many contracts as we do, we have the ability to shift staff where we need to do so. Within a three-year timeframe, I don't see how it would necessarily impact it in a huge deal, let's say five, 10, 15 years down the road. Obviously, that's something that we have to look at now, is not just that five-year period, but to see how parcels may have out of lack, or out of lack, or out of utilization of the rest of our town.
Okay.
I guess some, there could be the potential of added, you know, added to cost.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if we, if year number three, and maybe when they come back and do another proposal later, their next contract, the price might not be the same, so we might make a different decision. So, I guess kind of where I'm going is, if we decide on year number four to come back to you, can you accommodate paying this back into the poll without having, you know, a year's notice to?
Yes, yep, yeah, I mean, essentially, the, our current contracts are a little bit on the position, so our, also our, we're positioned several more staffs who are required at mine, even if the county had zero contracts, we would have to have a certain amount of staff. We have the oversight responsibilities, all the manufactured whole parcels, because that would be, even if themselves, are having responsibilities regardless of statute. So, we would have to have some staff, so, you know, being that's the fact, we, you know, certain portions of our budget are covered by the county, and then we only available with the cost of the process. So, if that were the case, we would hold our position, if we needed to add a position, San Francisco's is a size that's roughly going to be a half, or a razor, or it really depends on both your parcel maker and that whole thing.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mayor, I have another question.
One other question on this, on the out clause, which I doubt would ever come to fruition, but an out clause with two years, let's just give an example here, hypothetically, let's say we don't like what you've done, and, or you don't like what we're doing, or whatever, and it comes out to we give you notice, that's a two-year period of frame before you actually are terminated? Am I understanding that? So, how do you work with someone that doesn't want to work with you for two years, why, just asking dumb question, but?
Well, I guess the, I wouldn't take it personally, to me, it would be more of the, you know, it's what you guys are gonna do, what you feel best for your city, so it's, you know, in my opinion, it's for all public services, or, you know, if that's what your guys' choice would be, we're gonna do the same quality service that you got for the last couple of years.
I just, I just want to clarify, because it kind of strikes me weird, really going with somebody for two years that you don't really want to live with, but that's part of the possibility. Okay, any other questions then? No? Thank you very much. All right, Eric, you want to come up here and answer some questions for us?
Sure. Yeah, Mary Ball will be as well today, so, if you have any questions for her, great time to do that, but, you have any specifics you want me to answer, or?
Well, I'm gonna start this round off here, because I have a couple of questions that have been bothering me so long. I understand that you just took on Ham Lake.
That's right.
Okay, now, Ham Lake is double the population than we are, okay? And you only have the two full-time and one temp, or alternate, or whatever you want to call it, third person. And then, I understand, if I'm right here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that Ham Lake, you gave a one-year contract to Ham Lake. No, I'm not, I don't know if that's right, I want clarification.
There's a five.
It's a five.
Yep.
And, and they're out, is what, a two-year out?
It's the same as, you know, they're basically the same contract, short on now, this one.
So, let me ask you this then, do you think, do you think that you may be spreading yourself a little too thin when you're going to, just two cities will be over 22,000 population, so, and then, and I know, I know you're gonna agree, and I, you know, this country's been built on that type of attitude, but, you know, my concern is this, we're leaving something we've been with, that we know works, to go to something we don't know that works, okay? And, and that's the part of it. Now, I'm not saying that in three years, if we went with you in three years, we'd say that, you know, was a good move. I don't know that yet, because I'm not at that point in time yet. I know, when I started out as a contractor, I was just a little kid on the block, versus the bolties, the rottens, and sendexes, whatever, so I came into the game by just charging less to build a house, because it was, you know, their volume versus my quality, so I had to try hard. Little guy always has to try hard, I understand that. At the same time, once they gave me the chance, they were happy with it, but I had to get that chance. My point being is you want that chance, and I understand that, but we are looking at the city out of broader picture, and so, you know, I have, I have, I'm just wondering if you're not growing a little too fast, and that, that may jeopardize us. For instance, an example I'll give, is that when we went with building inspections, when the former building official left to pursue other things in his life, we decided, instead of tagging on to East Bethel, we decided to move ours up to have building official bring in Metro West as his backup, so that our in-house, our permitting and all that was in-house, so that we didn't have to, you know, depend on, you know, is East Bethel gonna get real busy, put ours on the back burner, or are we gonna be, you know, are we gonna get our permits done within the 10-day period or less, and we're, like we're used to. So, my point being is, that was a good move, I believe, that council made here, because again, we are control our permitting, and we're not, we're waiting to see, you know, if there's a boom time, which is going on right now, so East Bethel could put us on the back burner, which would affect our people. So, that's my main concern here, because you're not trying to test it in our situation here. This is one of the tough decisions I've had to make here, since I became here, and other ones that, but this, I mean, I don't want to say no to someone trying hard to make his business grow, but at the same time, I'm worried about the effect it has upon us. So, that's why I put in, I had the attorney put in that one clause, I don't know if you read it or seen it, yep?
Yes, I did.
Yourself, okay, so, do you have any problem with that?
Well, I guess I'll answer two things. First of all, I talked a lot about capacity, and, you know, I completely understand that 's one of the concerns you, you know, as a council, that you should be doing. But just, you know, Mary and I, of course, have talked about all this before, and we, the amount of, amount of capacity we have to do, and even allowance to this Ham Lake, that city in itself is, you know, roughly above a staff person, is how that kind of works out. My existing other contracts as well, pretty much, they've been at the point where their capacity is, right now, I have three people, myself included, that I'm doing, currently at work, I'm, you know, about one person can be doing as well. So, right now, I, you know, that's not, not a concern, not a problem to me. And the odd chance we were found that, you know, hey, this is a concern, there's other, there's other preachers and other assessors that I've worked with, that I know that pretty able to handle some of my work, or like the most of it down south where I work, just because, yeah, and also, I'd like, I'd like to be close in home, and, and, but, if need be, and, and now, while here, it's all of them are licensed and insurance assessors, have real good work. But as of now, you know, while we're doing this, I don't, I don't perceive there being an issue, but if there is, I, you know, I want to make sure I'm really good quality on as well. And I don't have discretion to, because that's, that's no fun, you're, you're working too hard, and life's not durable, you know, I don't want to do that either, so, I guess that's one point. As far as the other point is, the, the termination clause, whether to enable, last meeting, I know we've had talked about that termination clause, and to me, quite honest, I feel like that's what I'm comfortable with. And going into doing this right now, the way it would be set up is, if you signed off and started to do this, it basically gives almost a two-year window, you have until, I think, February 14th of this next year, cancel for the second year. But, you know, going into each of these places, it's, there's a little bit of learning, and you gotta understand the market, the different nuances and everything, and you need time to be able to do that. You know, most of my other contracts, if they're five years, I do have a similar out clause, but if they're a three- or a two-year contract, they do look a little short, and help you insert some, something that happens, just because it takes that much time to meet your head around what's going on. And the other thing is, to be honest, you know, assessors are the most popular people in the entire world, so if all of a sudden I, for example, I raise somebody that, that doesn't collect big raises, and friends with somebody, or whatever, I don't want all of a sudden to feel like poking over the shoulder, and quiet for meetings later, because I tried to, you know. So, I guess that's my concern, and that's why, you know, I feel like, the current one we have is, is fair enough, but for all of you, and anybody, whether it's another contractor or the county, that we have anything to work on, so.
Well, I just want to state that the reason I had that put in is because, like I say, you know, you know, if, if we were to go with you in three years down the road, you proved out good, that clause would mean nothing to you, because you have a track record. But, you know, creating track records are difficult, I mean, again, I've walked in those shoes, I know what that's like, and I was always begging for that chance, and sometimes I got it, sometimes I didn't. You know, the one thing, you know, one thing that bothers, I know, some of the, some of the council members in that, and myself in that, you know, you told us at one time, you know, I'm just trying to air this all out now, because I want to get the decision done if we can, but, you know, you know, in, you said you fashioned your contract pretty much after Anoka County, and in that, Anoka County was not charging us those example properties from the very beginning, but you did. Now, my question to you is, was that a simple mistake in overlook, or was it just something just, I don't know, just put it in just to think about it, I don't know.
I'll be, I'll be honest, that was a contract copy that I had done five years prior, or maybe I was approaching this, and I used a previous contract, so I kind of looked at 10 years ago contract from the county, there's obviously a reason that I was looking at it, but that was never, like you said, that was never my intention for my original proposal. That was not part of the bill, I mean, that was not something I would have gone to and said, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get your business by charging more money than the other county that, for, for making sense, so, for whatever reason, I mean, that was, that was in there amongst those rocks with my intention.
Right, so I said, you know, basically, you have three seconds to make a first impression when you put your best foot forward, and that gave me the effect, that kind of puts the doubts and some minds out, whether it should have been there or not, is a good question. At this particular point, we ask for some discussion. Rich, do you have anything to say on this?
I don't have any questions. I guess you want questions for Eric, or do you want to just start the discussion?
Start the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric.
Well, every decision I seem to lead off with, boy, I'm torn on this one. I, I don't like leaving somebody we've had a relationship with for so many years, but $7,000 is $7,000 over three years, it's only three years, I am leaning towards giving the 21 over three.
And saving up 21.
Yeah.
Actually, it's a little bit more, it's like 7800, something like that, over each year, so it comes out to three times 78, which is like, almost, almost $24,000, something like this stuff.
So, I'm leaning towards giving Eric and Mary a shot for three years. See how it goes. Now, it's not a comment on services we've gotten from the county at all, in my opinion. I'm simply looking at dollars, and what I've heard, I believe we can get a comparable service, so, that's the, that's the direction I'm leaning.
All right, Rich, so, Rob?
Mr. Mayor, I'm kinda, I'm kinda torn on this as well, with this 30-day clause in here, and, and just listening to both assessors, it sounds like at least one year, maybe two years, for that type of an out clause. That's not gonna change my mind, if we keep the 30 days in there, I'm leaning towards, like you said, Mr. Mayor, giving the small business that shot, to prove themselves, to do great work, to come in and provide a great service for the city at a savings, so, I personally wouldn't want the 30-day notice in there, because that, to me, really sets the assessor on for shortfall, when both assessors have said at least a year, maybe two, to, for an out clause. So, I would like to see that removed, moving forward, but I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards giving that shot.
Okay. Joe?
I'd have to agree with Rob and Rich. I give them a shot, I don't see an issue with that, and I think having two sets of ayes, like Jerry said last night, we talked about this when he was here, that it's not a bad thing to do, and with the math, over three years, it's a $23,448 savings, and over five, obviously, it'd be more, and I don't disagree with giving them a one-year out clause, to give them, give it an opportunity to, to understand that, or whatever, but I don't know if it's almost better if we don't go for five, with an out clause, with a one-year out clause, because obviously, prices can change.
Well, from what I understand, you, you know, are we doing, are we doing a one-year out clause with you, or do we stay with a two-year with you? I thought you told us we couldn't do it one year because you have too much invested.
The way, the way it's currently set up in there is one, one year, actually, December 15th, prior to the start, so I guess it depends what your conscious of, you know, if we start the process at the beginning of the year, and the assessment's completed in January, so, so for example, right now, we're, you know, we would be starting, working on a 2019 assessment, so you would need to have given one year notice prior to the start of 2018. Does that make sense? So, it's one year from the start of the contract, two years from the end of the contract, is how it's done. Does that make sense?
But, but also understand something, you know, I mean, we don't want you to fail, okay? We're just trying to protect ourselves as something new, and once you get a track made, you know, I've checked your references, and I know Mr. Newbauer has two, by the way, and every, all your references speak highly of you, not in the form of your own business, only in the form that you work with those people, and they know you very well in that situation. They said you're very customer service oriented, blah, blah, and go on and go on, but they spoke very highly, and that's from the city of Lane, the city of Coon Rapids, and the city of, East Bethel.
Well, I talked to them, both issues with the county.
So, so, you know, I mean, but like I say, again, they had no recommendation as far as you working on your own. So, you know, my, and I'll turn this over to Jerry for his part of the discussion, but I'm just saying, we're not trying to set you up for failing, okay? We're just trying to see, we just want to set, make sure that we're protected for this first model of time, then after that, once you prove it yourself, then it becomes a lot, a lot easier for us too, by the way. I mean, I only, you know, if we pick somebody we want to, you know, we don't want, I want to be able to say in three years, we made the right decision, that's what I want to be able to say, okay? So, Jerry, what do you have to say about this?
No, I, I concur with what everybody else is saying, Mr. Mayor. In the big scheme of things, when we're talking about planning for the city, there's a reason why, you know, there's, there's a 30-year comp plan, I mean, we're talking longer term. To me, three years is, is really just, just a snapshot. I think it, it's going to take at, at least three years to build a track record, you know? So, I, I don't have an issue with a three-year contract at all. You know, I, I generally like, like the price, you know, I, I'm all for saving money wherever we can, and if, at the end of three years, if, if we're, we're getting some bad feedback, we'll already have, you know, some board of equalizations going on, and, and we'll be getting feedback from, from our customers and our citizens here, so, you know, at, at the end of three years, I mean, we, we can go someplace else, you know, so, you know, I don't want to have to pretend that this is your only option, and we have to take it, you know, so, I'm, I'm all for give them a try, three years is really, really nothing in the big picture, and, and it's money. I mean, oh, in three years, I mean, that's the price of one of our, our police cruisers, so it's, that's a free car out of the deal, I mean, that's, that's how I look at it.
Anything else? Anything else? Yep. So just to understand, you're open to the three-year contract versus the five. The hold harmless on Section 11 stays as is. The period of the out clause stays at one to two years, a two-year out clause, that'll stay?
Twelve months from the start.
Twelve months from the start, okay. So we're going to do it before, 12 months before that day of 19th and 4th, 20th, right? Whatever type of thing, what you're saying, right?
Correct. So, all right. So, if it's February 15th of 18th, it's the same as my first one.
And that would be the same as February 15th of 19th or 20th, whatever, something like that?
Yeah, but it's, so it'd be actually ten and a half months prior to the date.
Is that the same thing you're working out with everybody, like Van Lake and all that stuff is pretty standard by yourself? Okay. So at this particular point in time, I think all the questions have been answered?
Mr. Mayor, I got one thing. I would like to kind of reiterate what Joe Newbauer said. I would like to see us lock in that rate for five years with an out clause, of course. I don't see with oversight from the county how a five-year deal wouldn't be the best route for the city, personally.
Well, I really wish this was an easier decision. Actually, I was wishing for someone to give you a negative comment on your reference. That's what I heard. I was teasing one of them when I said that, but, you know, because it's made this decision that was easier. I understand your thought about, because it is a bigger savings at that frame. I understand that, you know, but at the same time, you know, it's easier to say that at the end of the three years than it is at the beginning of the three years, okay? So you're saying that's great, Danny, that saves X amount of dollars over five years if that comes to fruition. But if it doesn't, you may look back at it and say, you know what, we're at a one to three. We don't know, okay? Just like people didn't know when they picked me in a contractor house, did they get a good quality guy or not? Turns out they did, but they didn't know. So anyway.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm saying is, we have a one-year out clause. Why wouldn't we extend to a five-year contract to benefit the savings? And in three years, these rates could be higher and we're looking at trying to save more money. And we do have the one-year out clause.
Mr. Mayor, at the end of three years, the county could come back and give us a better number as well. You don't know.
No, we don't.
You don't know what's going to happen in three years. Two weeks ago, we thought three years was a good place to start. I would just get the show on the road and go for the three years.
I mean, actually, I put in three years for protection on our end. Again, no reflection upon you two and the way you do things and all that. And again, I'm not trying to hope that you don't make it, you know what I mean? I want you to make it so I can, I like to make a decision to move on to the next one. I like to fix something, move on to the next thing. I don't like to sit there and go back and say, well, I got to correct what I screwed up on the first time. So I'd say, I understand where Rob is coming from, but at the same time, I'm comfortable with the three years.
Okay, right, I was just on top of trying to lock in the savings. Rich makes a good point, too.
Okay, so I think at this particular point, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve that this, is there a name of your company then?
It's Eric and Mary.
Eric and Mary.
So it's Eric and Mary, taking out the 30-day agreement, termination agreement, because we'll work out that one year. So it's one year from February, from the 19th. So we got, so we have to notify one year before, is that what you're saying?
Should be notified by February?
February 15th, prior to the start.
Prior year, okay. So that's in there. You know, and like I say, if this all works out, then of course that three probably will change by the next turnaround. So we have to take some risk here, but I think it's not a bad risk at all.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Am I done with it already?
Nope. No, no, no.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Tavado, I have a second.
You did second. Did you second or did I have first?
Well, I thought you made a motion.
No, I was asking for a motion.
Oh, oh, I'll make the motion then.
All right, you make the deal and I'll put this right here. And then, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So once again, I'm going to clarify this, this is with Eric and Mary for assessing services for the city of St. Francis for three years with the agreements, with the termination clause as already spoken about and the hold harmless in there and that the rate's locked in for three years. All right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Alex, too. Thank you for all your service. All right, moving on to, okay, moving on to Orange 235, second series amending Section 2-9-1 fee schedule, first reading.
Honorable members of the council, attached is a red line version of fee schedule changes that staff is recommending for 2018 and this is the first reading.
One question I have about the fees, when was the last time these fees were changed or dealt?
We change them annually.
Huh?
We change them annually.
Annually?
Why is there such a huge jump when the administrative years?
I think we went through a couple and realized it cost us so much more than.
Because I mean, it is easy to clear it out, but if you put it, one of the shit, Rinty went way up, but you found out that we were into it, that...
Yeah, we went through a couple in the past year that pretty much...
All right, any questions on this? I'll start with you, Jerry.
No, I don't have any questions.
Joe?
No, that was my only question.
Rob?
I didn't have any questions.
Richard?
Um, the only, well, does everybody call there's a fee schedule? Because to me, we kind of do three different things in here. A fee is somebody, something we charge somebody for services we provide to them. There's also our pay in here. There's penalties in here. Does every city call this schedule, fee schedule? Really, the speed to me sometimes is a misnomer for some things that are in here. Like when Mr. Carpe was in here talking about the penalties levied against him, he kept arguing that, you know, did it really cost you that much to enforce these things? Well, no, it didn't cost us that much, but it was the penalty. It was kind of off topic, but to me sometimes just calling this the fee schedule can be a misnomer, especially if you're talking about the penalties. Otherwise, everything else I see in here, as long as you've done, you know, looked at actuals and said, man, this really does cost us $1,000 to do this, or it's $250, I'll believe you. Okay. So I don't have any comments on that. I think it's, if this is what it's costing us to do business, that's fine. I was just kind of curious to know, does everybody call there's a fee schedule? So I think that's kind of confusing sometimes. Otherwise, that's my only question.
You know, let me ask you this, I mean, you see, look at this on an annual basis. So, you know, because you went from 100, you know, up to 20, I don't want the city to go a hole in anything, by the way, but from last year to this year, was that much of a difference?
I don't know how many administrative hearings we've had in the last five years. I just know we've had a couple recently that were enough to call attention to that.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, they probably don't look at every fee every year. We probably have reason to look at this fee schedule once a year.
Okay.
But I bet you every fee is not looked at every year. Is that a fair statement, Joe? Or do we look at every fee?
Well, I would say we have a new community development director that handles things a little bit differently. So most of the changes aren't from her.
Okay. Because I know I went over the renters fees with her, I did that myself with her. So I know that was a good thing. Like I say, I mean, I don't want the city to go out of pocket for administration type of thing like that, like I've seen before it done, so. All right, any other discussion at all, Mayor? All right, then I'm going to entertain a motion for Orange 235, second series amending Section 2-9-1 fee schedule, first reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bar makes that motion, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Newbauer makes the second. Are any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Orange, right? I'm sorry, gosh, I didn't get this right. I get this right my second year. Anyways, Bar, go for it.
House member Jerry Tavady.
Aye.
Neil Moore.
Aye.
Feldman.
Aye.
Power.
Aye.
Spardo.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. All right, moving on to the firefighter policy manual revisions. And that's going to bring Joe up to the table again.
One of the things Chief Schmidt's been working on is policy manual updates and we're calling them updates, not changes, because this is something that we want to go over each year. So we're going to review this on an annual basis and hopefully kind of break up the manual into segments throughout the year and provide, you know, let it adapt and evolve with what the needs of the department are. So you have two versions in the packet. One was a strike-through version that shows the actual changes that were made. The other one is a finalized copy. We ended up having to kind of redo the whole thing. There was several different formats through Word and a couple other processing software that we weren't able to just clean up into one. So ended up rewriting the whole thing. So that'd be the second version that you're seeing, but both are going to match, one's just going to contain the stuff that we eliminated. Couple of the large items in it, one, change of the officer staff, which would go, right now we're at chief, assistant chief. We still have an interim captain's position and three lieutenant's positions. That's how we're operating. That's not necessarily what the current policy manual reflects. Due to inability to put people in positions that the policy manual has, it's just, it's a little bit screwed up and we're not actually even following what it is currently today. So this cleans that up. The intention would be to go with chief, assistant chief, three captains and one lieutenant. And that would be going forward with that. Couple of the ideas behind that are, one, we have people in lieutenant's positions and even some kind of assisting positions that have access to things and information with employees and stuff that we feel needs to be at a little bit higher level. There's also going to be a little bit more responsibility placed on some of these people. One you'll notice is one that handles inspections. So there's going to be a little bit more going on with that position than there might be with the one who just manages the trucks and the equipment at the station. So other than that, the other big item was pay raises for different levels. Currently, we're staffing, you know, just under 20. Of that, I believe 75% of them would meet this. However, you know, we're approved to hire eight more coming up here in the future. So you essentially have, after the eight next hires, probably a group of 15 or so that won't even be affected by these pay raises. It'll be just the people above that, starting at the five-year mark, which is just a 50 cent raise. And then going up to 20 years. And at 21 years or more, which I believe we only have one person who would even meet that criteria, it does bump them up to $15 an hour. I think the logic behind it is, is, you know, and I know with previous meetings, we're always asking, what are other departments doing? And the direction that I'm going to steer, council and staff, is we're not competing with other departments, we're competing with other part-time jobs. And industry standard right now, I was making $10, $11 an hour mowing lawns for the city of Brooklyn Center 20 years ago. So for a firefighter to start at $12 an hour is, we're not asking for $18, $19, $20 an hour, we're asking for a 50 cent bump. So there is that investment on the side of council if you're approving that tonight. Additionally, what that would be to include the fire department and future COLA increases, meaning you provide other city staff with a COLA increase, firefighters would then start taking part of that. So again, an additional investment. Chief Schmidt has ran the numbers. We are within budget if we make these changes today, so we're not over budget just by making these changes today. A lot of that has to do with the age of our department, where we don't have a lot of people that are in that 15, 20-year mark. So the hope would be to get there and keep these people into that. And we think this is one of those steps to doing that. So with that, I'm assuming everyone had the opportunity to go over some of the changes. A lot of the small ones are just grammatical. But do you have any questions or is there any information I can provide further with this?
Probably, Mr. Bar. Some of my questions are, and I've come from another department that usually had, that had a day captain and a night captain. I'm not so opposed to having three captains, but just based on the numbers of staff that we have, we're looking at a lot of supervisors and very little subordinates. And I don't want that to kind of weigh everyone's decision here, but is that in line with the way the five subordinate structure of the fire department is outlined?
And I think the thing to keep in mind when you're looking at it from that aspect is, we never know who's going to show up. So when we're, when we get three captains and we have a callback, we might only get one captain at that callback. We might get all three. But we have to kind of plan on worst-case scenario, not best-case scenario. So understandably, yes, when you look at the department, currently at a staffing level of just under 20, three captains does seem excessive. We're also planning on eight brand-new hires, which with those eight hires is going to put us at about a 50% of the department less than five years, which we think in itself qualifies for some additional supervision. We're going to need an extra set of eyes overseeing some of these people. So that is kind of the logic behind it, although the department is just under 20 today. Hopefully in the next six months, we'll be looking at a department of 25. And then as the city continues to grow, we want to be ahead of it. We don't want to be asking for additional captains two, three, four years from now if the population starts to increase or we have an increase in presence of business and commercials. As to your question with the daytime versus nighttime, we've kind of inserted one of the positions as that inspector position. Most inspections are going to have to take place during the daytime. So whoever applies for that position is going to have to have that daytime availability. And it's not that we're going to pull them out of inspections to answer calls and stuff, but assuming that when they're not doing inspections, that they're daytime available, that would be, you know, not necessarily preference given, but to perform that role, you are going to have to have some daytime response, so.
I did read in here that you want, are you going to a 20% across the board or...
Correct. Currently, we operate in, I've been here for, coming up on two years, I still don't quite understand what my quota or what I am supposed to do. So if that kind of gives you some background as to the current policy book, that's what we're operating under today. If I had to take my best guess at it, currently you do 30% of calls that occur in either a daytime or nighttime response, meaning we start the clock at, I think, 6:00 AM and finish it at 6:00 PM. You're given one full point if you respond to a call during the day and you're a daytime responder. If you respond at night and you're a daytime responder, you get a half point. By the time we're done with this system and trying to add up those numbers to get people these reports so they understand where they are at, we're too late. If they're below quota, we're now compounding them with information after the fact. If they're above quota, great, no issues, but we look at it as we have to do something easier. This also prevents us from having to hire additional help to just run the math on this stuff. I've also noticed when people have had issues with their quota being underneath, there's always this question of, well, was I there, wasn't I there? And this system of half points and full points is making it really hard to go back in time. And what do you do when a call goes off at 5:30 at night and ends at 6:30? You know, is that a daytime call? Should I get half credit, full credit? So we wanted to find something a lot more easier to work with. Chief Schmidt crunched a bunch of numbers, looked at it and said, 20% seems to be an average of what most people are falling under without overburdening anybody. I've done a little bit of math on it, too. We're about to hit probably around 300 calls this year. 20% of 300 calls puts you at about 60-some calls for the year, just to meet your minimum quota. That's five or six calls a month. We think that's a pretty doable number. And we're not opposed to readdressing this if we were to implement it and it just isn't working, so.
The next one is the compensation. I really like that concept, just from experience, that I know, I was in that department for seven years and speaking with people prior to that that had been there almost 20 years, the $12 an hour rate has been pretty steady for probably almost 20 years, which is sad for our firefighters. I really like the way it steps up a little bit and I have no problem with the 21 years of service with that type of jump, because what you want to do with that is you want that person to stay. You know, once you create longevity, you want to give an incentive to keep that longevity. So, and I hate to put John on the spot, are your part-time employees given some portion of the cost of living increase every time there's a cost of living increase that's set by the city?
Not every time. It depends on certain...
They're...
They have gotten it in the past, yes, but not every time that we've gotten a cost of living increase.
And like I said, I don't want to reinvent the wheel and I don't want one department to get a certain portion. We're going to, I personally think it should be part-time across the board. Whatever we decide about COLA, it's part-time employees across the board for the city. So that's the only concern I have about this policy.
And one of the things that, from the last city I came from, they had a Me Too clause. So union contracts would negotiate, they'd come up with a cost of living increase and then all the non-contracts would get the Me Too, which if, you know, police got a 4% raise and Public Works got a 2% or vice versa, they'd come up with some average in between. And that would be the Me Too provided all the rest of the workers, so.
I was curious about that here. Do we do that here typically, don't we? The Me Too thing? Who's talking about or what did unions end up getting a lot of, to try to match that or not?
Yeah, so we have two unions, police, public works, and then we have non-union, which covers everybody else. And that's all subjected to the city council.
Todd might be able to some better answer that. Is there, is there a me-too clause within the, the union contract? And I know I have one in our union contract.
I don't, I don't think it's in the union contract. I don't, I don't think it reads like that in, in the union contract.
Mr. Mayor, as a practical matter, it makes it really hard to tell the non-union employees that they're not getting a 3% raise when you just negotiated a 3% raise with a, a union. You know, and, and it seems like that the, the police and public works unions are always, we always negotiate those first and then the, the next thing you negotiate is the, the non-union employees and, you know, but it, how do you tell them that, no, they're not getting the, the COLA increase and 75% of your other employees are? You know, so although it, it really isn't, I mean, there's, there's no me-too, you know, verbiage in, in the contract. I mean, it essentially is a me-too contract, or me-too agreement. I mean, essentially, I mean.
Remember something happening when we were in the audience there, something along those lines where they, you know, employees with the COLA.
And, you know, good negotiator that negotiates for the non-union employees, I mean, you're going to have something, I mean, he's going to look and see what, what you negotiated. And he's going to say, well, you gave these guys that, you know, we want the same deal. Or, you know, they might negotiate something more. Or they might do something in lieu of, well, in lieu of the 3%, we want, you know, more of a contribution in our healthcare savings account or something, you know, but it, it tends to be fairly equal.
Rob, any third thoughts on this?
That's it.
And Rich?
No, I like, I like it. Again, I want to thank the fire department leadership for taking on these tasks of cleaning house and getting things organized and bringing us more. It's not just organization, it's making sure everyone understands where they stand and what's expected of them. And so I think these are all good steps forward and I absolutely agree with the pay increase table. I guess two, well, maybe kind of three things. One was, I was going to ask about the me-too part of it. But when you're asking if the COLA, is that? I guess just to clarify what you're asking for, is that then for the non-union employees?
So we don't negotiate our, our wages or any COLA increases. So essentially, city, it's going to be up to the city to determine what the COLA increase is and just provide that to us. If your COLA increase is zero, then we accept zero as your cost of living increase, so.
Right, and that, that's in line with the non-union employees?
Yeah, we're, we're all non-contract.
I was just trying to clarify that. And the only other question I had, which I think Rob already answered it, but just to clarify it. So it was $12 across the board regardless?
Correct. We have somebody who's worked there for 20 years and is making the same as somebody who walks in daily.
I don't have anything to add. I, I think, you know, a good policy that, that's clear and concise and has up-to-date accurate information is, is a great communication tool. And I think it really helps solve a lot of the problems down the line. Especially if there's any disciplinary actions, you could say it's, it's right here in the policy. I mean, you're given this policy, you know, when you're hired at the beginning of the year and, and it's there, you agreed to it. It really makes anything you do from, from that point forward, you know, very, a lot easier. So I, I'm a favor of this, you know, to me, you know, 50 cents, you know, is nothing. I mean, we have, there's, I think in the big scheme of things, we've got a lot bigger fish to fry than, than, you know, paying an employee 50 cents more.
And I just want to add here that, yeah, I have no problem with this. I like the fact, like what Rich said, is, you're new leadership, you have the policies and stuff like that, which is long overdue. You're asking a firefighter to put his life on the line for 12 bucks an hour, I mean, you know, I mean, that's, we're fine. I'm fine with all of that. I mean, the cost of living, I, I like to be fierce all the way across, so I have no problem with any of it. I have to just say, ask you one question. I mean, going from two captains, I think you said, to, to
From one.
One, to three lieutenants, something there, right? Does this not give veteran incentive for promotion within the department a little bit?
So just to clarify, we'll be going from one captain and three lieutenants, which again, there's a little bit of unknown between what a training officer is, what a lieutenant is. But essentially, one captain and three lieutenants to three captains and one lieutenant. So yes, we're hoping and we're all, in my opinion, we're already starting to see people, I'm getting bombarded with people are trying to take classes to the point where I'm even
Well, that's what I was hoping here.
I'm telling people, let's slow down and let's get this class out of the way first. But yes, absolutely, we're seeing that.
Now, I actually, to be honest with you, I like what I see with the fire department. I like what, uh, the choices we made for, for leadership. I think it's going in the right direction, long, long overdue, so I, I like it. So on that, if we pass this now, will this go into effect immediately?
January 1st of 2018.
So do I have a motion at this, thank you, Joe, by the way. Do I have a motion at this time to, to an upgrade, or I like to put it, update or upgrade of the fireman's policy?
Approve the update.
Approve, approve the update of the firefighter policy manual revisions. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Second, I will make the second. If I had any further discussion, do all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, good job. Need of the public, anybody, at the second round? We don't have too many people here, so I guess we can. All right, public works department's report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. And your packets tonight is our monthly water and sewer and streets and parks reports. Couple of things that I want to point out is the results of our, our wastewater treatment plant and the, the treatment that we're getting there. You're seeing, you know, 99% removal on a lot of those constituents, so that's, that's working really well. Water and sewer locates, we still had 60 in the last month. So things are still happening out there. Holes are still being dug, so that's a good thing. We did have our fourth graders start their tours of the water treatment plant this year where they build their, their filters out of two-liter pop bottles. But we've also incorporated a, a second portion of that tour where we take them to the wastewater treatment plant and show them that as well. And that's, that's getting really good results and really good feedback. Kids are really enjoying seeing that, so. Also, on the, the streets of Parkside, you saw for October, you know, wet month, warm still, and we, we still mow a lot of grass in October, so that's finally starting to slow down for us and, and we're getting, shifting into winter here, so. We did get our sweeping done and it was very timely as far as the leaf, the leaves falling and, and cold weather hitting about, about perfect for the, the sweepers to be out. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Sure, I'll serve you.
How did your intern work out?
The, the one-week intern with the school turned out really well. Good student, asked a lot of questions and, and helped us out, worked through things. And I think he gained some good experience by the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant, both at the same time, even though his primary focus this time was waters.
What, what types of tasks did you have him complete?
We mostly focused on lab and the daily rounds of the water treatment plant and the daily rounds of the wellhouse and, and water tower. But there were a lot of other miscellaneous items that we had.
Good. Now, that's a great experience.
Joe, any questions?
I think our wastewater treatment facility is looking pretty good. I like the, I like the numbers. Pretty happy.
Rich?
The only question I had, when we had our last workshop with the Riverbank Lane residents, I talked to Paul afterwards and you made a comment about, one, one of the residents had made a comment about, boy, the city hasn't been through here and laid class five down, whatever the term is, you know, many, many years. And you made a comment to me that I would have sworn we did that in the last couple of years or whatever. Is this kind of report, where, where's the best place to capture, yes, we actually did that kind of stuff? And I'm just looking at the things we get complaints about, whether it's grading or maintenance, general maintenance of our gravel roads. Is this kind of report someplace where you would tell us, this month, we graded 241st? We, or is that it getting into too much detail and that? I just want to see if there's a way where you can come up with a record.
There, there, there is a, an item here, I think it's on a, maybe it's the first page, but it's like shouldering disc and gravel roads.
It doesn't tell me if I went to River's Bank or Went to 241st.
Right. Since that meeting, we've actually started tracking some of that stuff internally if we're asked specifically. But as far as this report, you know, we do put down that, for example, 33.8 miles of gravel was graded in October. And we'll see that a significant amount again here for November as we take the crown out, or most of the crown out of gravel road to prevent cars from slipping into the ditch. So there's a, you know, we touch every gravel road prior to winter freeze-up. So that number should still be high there, but.
But you are keeping track of someplace where the periodic stuff, the weather, just putting down a plaster or whatever, we've got a record and we can go back and tell people what we've been up to on their neighborhoods the last couple of years.
Yep. In the past, we haven't, haven't kept that specific of, of a record. But in light of that, those meetings, you know, I felt that it was time that we do, just, just so we have that peace of mind in case you guys want to know.
Can you put that on the website?
I mean, you know, as soon as we have a new website, then you can, with that in there, people can see that and throw it themselves and see that we've done this or not done that, whatever, possible.
I think we can put whatever we want. Whatever you want a paid staff to do. I mean, at, at some point, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, if you have a, a, a location or something on there, you know, that you can just go to and plug, and just plug different numbers in, but that way people, where that question can access it. You know, I'll bring it up in my report, but I've seen the website. I like what I've seen is accessible, you know, it's another form of communication, which we've always talked about, how to get the public involved and reasons we did it, so, just a thought. Because I agree with you, and it's something that people have a question. The main thing, the, one thing we, like, my thought is, by the way, and I think we've talked about this before, but if you have a question, you want to give an answer. Just want to put it out there, answer it. Whether it be the answer they want to hear or not, because two plans is what we require, what we deserve as taxpayers and see. All right, any other questions for? All right, now at this time, then I guess I'll move on to council member reports. And I'm going to start this one with Rich.
Yeah, I wish you would have started better. I don't believe I, I don't believe I have anything for this month, this meeting.
All right, Rob?
I would just like to say, I know it was in the consent agenda, but St. Francis's polling locations have changed for 2018. They've been established in this building. So there's going to be more information coming out from the city throughout the year until we get to election time next year. But I think that's a, a great change for our residents, to be able to get them kind of inside when they're voting. So that's all I really have.
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Obviously, we've got the tree lighting coming up on November 29th. And that'll be at Woodbury Park from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. That's next Wednesday, I believe. Other than that, I don't have left here.
I wanted to apologize to everybody for, for missing the last council meeting. I, I was in the doctor's with, with, I hurt my wrist, so I was in getting my wrist checked out. So I was unable to make it here. Last week, I think it was either last week or the week before, I can't remember the exact date, but there was a upper River Watership Commission meeting. And, you know, it was more of the same. They're, they're really trying to do their, their plan, 10-year plan. So they're just planning that. It's, no new changes were made. They were just talking about making revisions and, and opening up and having all these other constituents comments on it, like the DNR, the Nova Conservation District, and the EPA. All, all these PCA, I mean, all these people get, get a chance to respond to our 10-year plan and then we take all their responses into consideration, we answer them and, and change it. But as of right now, I don't think there's any changes. The only thing that, a comment that, that was made was that St. Francis hadn't paid their, their bill yet. I did check with Darcy. Darcy had said that they were late in sending us an invoice and, and her knowledge that the check all got sent out. So, you know, that, that should all be current by, by the next meeting. And I just want to, you know, remind people again, I know we've had a couple snowy days, but, you know, let's, let's slow down, let's drive safe, let's not end up in ditches, you know? And, you know, have a good, happy, safe Thanksgiving. That's it.
All right, well, I want to bring up about our website, which went online on the 16th of November. Example I have here, I said, I went on looking for something on the plain website and I actually had to click eight times to find it. But I noticed that our website's a little more fresh and easier to find stuff and all that. It's going, it's going, you know, I appreciate any input from the residents, of course. And we'll, it's going to be a, a, a work in progress and we'll tweak it as time goes on. But it's there, there's subscription on there, notifications on there. We've got police information, all the department's information there, record and everything, so, meeting and everything. So I, I like what I've seen right now. It's a good, real fresh look and I hope that people will like what they see. And I realize that it's a, a good forum for you to communicate with us. And the meeting code will be coming onboard here, I understand, real quickly. I know there's some setbacks, but it's coming on. So it gives you an opportunity to check the codes out and get an idea, looking at things before. Do, do some homework before you get to actually putting that post in the ground and that foot in the ground, whatever. Try to answer something that might help us to answer some of your questions before you get behind the eight ball. Try, try not to get behind the eight ball, rather. I like that. I also want to bring up about the holidays. You know, it's, lucky with snow so far, but it is dark and rainy, so please, you know, safety is one of my main concerns here on 47. I work with Paul Jung and MINDOT on there. We're going to be doing a study, just to let you know, on crossing, on traffic crossing on there. We, we held it off to springtime to get a true, real, real consensus of how much, how many people cross that. Because again, in winter, you know, parents may be taking their kids with vehicles in the school and all that. So we want to get a good portrayal of, of the amount of people using that intersection. So we are working with MINDOT to get that stoplight in there. We're not tying it to the road that we want to get between Bridge Street and 47. We're making that a safety concern, which is our first priority here. So I know that's, that's something very important to me and I know with council, too, so we will keep on that. And MINDOT's been very receptive to us and I just want to let you know that we're onboard with that. Reading the newsletter, each time I cut out the newsletter, I try, it's my, it's one way for a format for me to bring you up to date with what the council staff are into, what we're trying to accomplish. So, wait, it's there, it's online, it's also emailed to you, so take advantage of it. Gives me a way to, I can't go door-to-door and tell you everything I'm doing all the time or the council's doing every time, but I can do that through this newsletter and newsletter. But once again, I agree with everybody in the council, please drive safely and have a great, safe, happy Thanksgiving and all the holidays to come. I can't wish that upon everybody enough. So on that, if I had any further business, I take it that's about it for tonight? Okay, in that case, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:08. Thank you.